Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Tinsborough High School. Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand eighteen, school committee meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, we'll start with introductions. Downstairs, Julie.
Good evening, Julie.
Hi, good evening, Mike Ryan.
Good evening, Mark Reich, who was assistant superintendent.
Hi, Mike Foyd, I'm superintendent of schools.
Anthony Tenner.
Paul Mitchell.
Robert Mullin.
Amy Pizarski.
Ryan McMahon.
Joe Messina, business administrator.
Sharon Fairbanks.
Thank you, at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand to pledge allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and the true republic from which it stands on all nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could get a motion to approve the January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen capital asset minutes, February six, two thousand eighteen, school committee and executive session minutes. Executive session minutes, not to be released at this time, February six, two thousand eighteen, superintendent evaluation subcommittee minutes, and the February twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, tri board.
We'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Something that cares.
I'd like to make a motion to move items nine, A, B, and C up in the agenda.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Seconded by Amy. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in for one minute, we do have a guest in the audience tonight, and I want the rest of the committee to be aware. We have Dr. Bates, who's joining us tonight, Dr. Bates is a well-known, well-respected educator in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And he's been working this year as a coach to our three building principals. So it's an opportunity for Dr. Bates tonight to actually come watch Mr. Ogden present to the committee. So thank you, Mr. Dr. Bates, for being here, and I just want you to know who that face was in the audience.
Thank you, Dr. Bates.
Hi, Tinsborough High School class rank presentation. So, Mr. Chair, as you know, we had plural conversations about the desire by the high school to really step back and look at class rank and as an entity and our practice moving forward. And I know that Mr. Ogden and Ms. Train have done a lot of work, and I think, I think one of the things that were most proud is the fact that kids had a voice in this committee. And I think anytime we can provide kids a voice is certainly important. So we have a presentation for you tonight, and we're just looking to really get in front of the committee with questions and kind of give you information about where the high school wants to go. So at this time, I'll turn over to Mr. Ogden.
Thank you for having us tonight. As Mike said, we began this process last spring. I part of the principal's group within the midwatch team, and another principal in school brought up that they're moving away from this practice of utilizing class rank within their school. So it's something that we started to look into, we didn't just simply say, okay, they're not coming anymore, let's go away from that. We really started to dig and find out the why. So with the course of this year, we spoke to students, we spoke to colleges, we've met with some parents, as well as the research data we've been able to gather on our own. And that's what we're going to present to you tonight. It is going to look like it's a slanted presentation heavily toward moving away from class rank, when not saying there's on another side of this. The pros that we're finding with class rank that are the most glaring is competition amongst peers, and then individual student recognition. Actually, we still believe those things will take place within our presentation, but there'll be a more positive effect, as well as other benefits to moving away from this. So current practice here at Tinsborough High School is following trimester one, they have your freshman year, you're given a GPA and a rank after that first trimester. You don't even have fifteen credits yet, and you're already receiving a rank. It doesn't matter if I took an art class and K took a science class, our ranks are thrown right in there. So there's no true equal measure, especially that early for a student's academic career at Tinsborough High. The rank come their senior year is used to determine valedictorian, and then rank is also reported out to colleges and universities. So what we found when we started to look into things are there are a number of issues with class rank. So the intention of class rank is to compare students among the same schools. What actually happens is colleges use it to compare students from other schools. But there's no way that our rigor, our programming, our school performance is the same as another school, every school is different. We're a school of four hundred and eighty-two kids, Trumpston High has thousands, and to compare a student's rank here versus there doesn't make any sense. Not the same course, not the same program. So class rank is not actually used the way it's intended to, is to delight students in the same building. The next thing that we found is the difference in GPAs is often so insignificant. In giving this presentation, a lot of times I refer back to Lash's graduating class, Lash's graduating class was extremely highly achieving. There were twenty-six kids, if you attended the academic excellence breakfast, that had above a three point seven five or higher. So within that point two five from three seven five to four oh, twenty-six kids were in there, they all succeeded academically. That point two five is such a small amount, and even when you look at each individual kid closer, within one through five, five through ten, the percentage is so small that we're seeing from what we found that it plays a big, students all show that academic success and that's important, and then simply can be able to rank them out by such small points there. The next point of the issue with it is eliminating, by eliminating class rank, it eliminates colleges' abilities to restrict students from certain scholarships and programs. What we've heard is if, for instance, you're not in the top ten percent of some of your high school graduating class, you can't get in a certain honors program that colleges. If you don't report that class rank, they can hold that against you, which Mr. Ogden will talk more about after. Then last point, it has to do with mainly with student's social emotional health. This is, our hope is that this will eliminate stress and anxiety, students won't feel the need to take that extra AP course to stay up with their classmates. If they have an interest in art or in math or in science or any other subject, that they're not simply chasing that AP course or that higher GPA ones to either of the world.
Next, do colleges require class rank? The answer to that is no, colleges do not require class rank. This year, between our college representatives visiting students in the fall, as well as our college fair, we personally spoke with over eighty college representatives. And we also did research on multiple other schools, and those were from a variety of schools, including highly competitive selective schools, and all of the schools said that they do not require class rank. They did say, however, that they would use it as a data point, as Mr. Ogden had suggested, that if we are going to give that data, then that they could use it, which could ultimately end up negatively impacting our students. For example, when it comes to the top ten percent of students can get into the honors program. In our school, that's a small number of students, so if we use last year's graduating classes as an example that Mr. Ogden spoke about, they were very competitive students. So they might not have been in a class of two thousand and seventeen in the top ten percent, but if they graduated in the class of two thousand and sixteen, they would have been in the top ten percent. So giving that data point to those colleges, that is a data point that they don't need, we don't want to give them something that can ultimately negatively impact our students from getting into programs to scholarships or possibly college admissions.
So the next question is what are other high schools doing around us? So I was able to reach out to my principal group as well as the student services department reached out to other local schools around us. And then there's also some in there that I was able to pull from a report from another principal from the midwatch as well. Out of the thirty-seven schools that were able to reply back to this question of how they use class rank, only twelve of them still use that. We're not part of that survey, I didn't put this in there, but when you look at that list of schools, there's very highly rated schools, for what I consider highly rated schools, that don't report class rank to colleges. I know for a fact that the kids in the top half of that there are getting into great schools. So when you look at that list, it's, are we falling behind where it's only twelve of thirty-seven? And if you look nationally, most schools are not reporting this as well.
To jump in on that, let me do some research, a lot of the colleges, there was some research that was done, and then I, highly competitive schools are only reporting that twenty to thirty percent of their students that have applied and been accepted were in class rank. So as Jeff said, that is something that's occurring nationally of students not reporting class rank. So what are the benefits? Jeff spoke a little bit about the issues in regards to class rank, which then become obviously the benefits. One is that it reduces that stress and anxiety for students. We do have a lot of students that have a lot of stress and anxiety, and a lot of those are falling to students that are in the top of their class. After we spoke with some of the students in regard to this, a couple of students that are in the top of their class and multiple grade levels had come up to Jeff and I individually and said, you know, that would take off so much pressure for me to feel like I could just worry about my own GPA, not what about, not about what other students are doing. Whether that's putting that stress on themselves, or a family's putting that stress on them, that would take that away because they could only focus on themselves rather than other students in their class. So if that's going to have that AP student go to sleep at midnight instead of four o'clock in the morning, and that's a bright student, that's going to do well in that class, to take away that worry that I have to do the best in my class, then maybe they're going to perform better because they're going to get that rest, and they're going to be worrying about their social emotional health along with their academics. Another benefit is in regards to their students being free to pursue classes that they want, that they want to take. So we have a lot of kids that want to be that number one or two, to want to be at the top of their class, and they're choosing their courses to be able to get there. So they're choosing AP courses that, they might be choosing, let's say, an AP chemistry class, for example, they're not interested in sciences. And they're an art student, they really want to take that art class, but they want to, they have that stress and that pressure that they put upon themselves to graduate at the top of their class. So they're choosing classes to boost their GPA, which will ultimately boost their class rank instead of taking classes that they trust them. Another benefit is to create more of a sense of community among peers. An example to this is years ago, we used to have a top ten breakfast, and around, right around trimester two, and I don't even know if there were trimesters at that point, but right around the point where GPA and rank were getting reported, it got ugly. And students started to go against each other because it was only those top ten students. So it didn't matter what I did as a student, I could have done my best and been number up, you know, got an A plus in PE, and somebody else could have gotten an A minus in PE, and that put us at the ten, and they started going after each other. I shouldn't say going after each other, but they were kind of, and they were pretty negative, you know, some students were pretty negative to each other. They were going and talking to teachers and trying to get their grades changed just to get in that top ten. And we really looked at it as a team and thought, why are we having students fight each other and want other people to fail? And not worry about themselves and want themselves to succeed. And it's sounding like that means that we're not into competition. We definitely are, Jeff and I are both, you know, old college athletes at this point, and we are not about everybody gets a trophy, and that is the last thing that I feel. But when it comes to academics, and it comes to student's social emotional well-being, we want to make sure that we're doing what's best for them. And if you take that away, and you want students to succeed, you're going to create that sense of community, and you want your peers to do well, and you want everybody in your class to do as best as they can. And hopefully, taking away, eliminating that class rank will help create more of a sense of community. And lastly, what we already kind of hit on is it eliminates opportunity for some colleges to reject students' applications or have them not be able to receive a scholarship or program, but we already spoke about that earlier.
So the recommendation that we're making is to move away from class rank, practice reporting class rank. Transition would begin with the class of two thousand twenty, which are our current sophomores, I'll speak a little bit more about that in a second. And class rank would no longer be calculated for any time. The competition piece will still be there because don't continue to recognize students with a GPA of three seven five or higher, the academic excellence award. And then their senior year, they also get the academic excellence breakfast to attend if they're three seven five or higher. And if you're three five or higher, you'll still be reaching out to get the principal's award. And then the final piece there, the termination, currently we have a valedictorian, the class president give a speech of graduation. Class president will continue to give a speech, but the termination of graduation speech, though, taking place in the valedictorian, would be done through a selection process, this process has not been finalized by any means, but a quick example there is if we include a submission of an essay, it would then be narrowed down, the committee would then mute that speaker to see who would be selected. That committee would be made up of teachers, students, administrators, not myself, I've already said I want nothing to do with that because I don't want to get called out on it more than anything else. And I trust the people around me make good decisions and it brings, brings more people in. So with that, so far, we've met with a group of students as well as staff and school council. And speaking with students, the group that we have, we spoke with freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, because obviously the senior class would not be affected by this. Twenty-three out of twenty-five of the students were in favor of this. One was indifferent, and then one said, no, I want to keep it. All the staff members supported this, including we had one of our paraprofessionals, she's, her son was a valedictorian, and she saw, she spoke directly to the stress that her son went through, she said, I wish he would have gone and taken an art class, but he wouldn't do it. He was chasing that number one rank in half a time, and she saw how stressed he was. He's going on, he went on to a very good school and is very successful, but she saw how stressed he was during that, during his high school time. And then school council also was in support of it, the parents that we spoke to. The feedback from both students and parents was, why are we not starting with the juniors right away? I think after we saw this, that was their question. It's my belief that, and feelings that the junior class has known about class rank since they've been here, many of those kids have worked very, very hard to get where they've been. And they just take away that, ripping off the Band-Aid, I don't know if that's necessarily fair to those kids that have worked to be there. I get it's a handful of kids at this point that are probably competing for that number one rank. It's something we're still looking at, but I feel as though there needs to be some sort of processes, as opposed to just a clean, we're not doing it anymore. Because for those students, the families that have put in that time and effort to just take it away, I don't feel that's completely fair for this time. So we are looking at what other schools are doing, convert to make that transition with the juniors, but it's still something we're discussing. And then just finally, our next steps in this going forward, we are planning on meeting with the freshmen, sophomore, and junior classes as a whole to get their feedback on it. And then we'll also hold a parent night as well to inform them of what we're looking to do going forward.
Very good, thank you, thank you both for presenting.
I'll open it up to the board.
So you spoke with twenty-five students, what are the ranks of those students?
Oh, so what we did is I grabbed class officers, and I said, get some friends, bring some people on here. So it was a good.
So it was a good mix?
Yeah, I'm looking around, it was a good mix, yeah.
Over the number one ranked student, the junior class and sophomore classes at the speaking?
Yes, yes, they were.
Was there any thought given to change in the algorithm that calculates it versus getting rid of it?
That still wouldn't eliminate one of the issues I see with colleges using it against our students. I mean, that's one of the biggest factors, is if they have it, they'll use it, and that's the feedback that we have from a lot of them.
So if you calculate it, are you obligated to provide it to the college?
No, it's whether we report it or not. So in colleges anyways, it keeps needing to be more to it, colleges recalculate every GPA.
So, yeah, so every high school is on a different GPA scale. Our GPA scale is not overly inflated, so our college prep class to our honors class only has a point two difference when we're on a four point O scale. So if you look at some other schools, some students you might hear say, I have a four point five, our students can't get there, they have a four. So some schools are on a five point O scale, some students get a full one point extra weighted for an AP class, where we're at, you know, that point two, point two five for the AP classes. So when students apply to schools, colleges put all the students on the same playing field, so they have their own calculation, and they give their own points to have students get their GPA. So our students' GPAs often recalculate higher, but some would recalculate lower. So if students start taking their junior and senior year, they choose to take a lot of electives, some colleges might not choose to take those electives. So that in itself would change where the student would rank. So we could have, you know, twenty students apply to a certain college, depending what classes they took, their rank could shift on their, how they recalculate their GPA.
And we're not looking to get rid of the grade point average, so that, the student will still be given that, they simply won't know what their rank is unless we had a conversation and I said, I have a three seven six.
So the students who are invited to speak at graduation, it'd be, anybody can volunteer, and anybody can submit an essay regardless of your GPA?
Yep.
Or is it only open to the top?
Anyone. And last year, we also had, so you have to know, we're going to be awards night for scholarships. I needed another speaker for that last year, it was more difficult than I thought, I think it's, obviously they do it, but so there'll be multiple events again, but it'll be open to anyone. Any members from the senior class don't want to speak, they could definitely be part of that, that's like.
So I see this as two issues, I guess. First is reporting to colleges, that I tend to agree with, I don't think that, you know, they're comparing apples and oranges when they compare Lowell to Chelmsford, or, you know, New York, or wherever the different schools are. How is U Lowell, I know they changed the way they bring people in, are they taking GPAs, or is it the SATs that they're not?
They're not taking, they are test optional right now, so they, we have the, they want the GPA, obviously. I did speak with them, they said in regards to class rank that it wouldn't hurt our students at all, we have a good relationship with them, but their SAT and ACT optional.
So you're still going to be calculating GPA, correct?
Yes, students will still receive it.
You're just not reporting on their report card?
We would report their GPA, not their class rank.
And to the student themselves, they're not going to get a notification that they're number one, number two, or number thirty-five?
No.
Whatever.
They would get their GPA.
I mean, I look at, you know, you talk about the benefits and reducing stress and anxiety for students. That's one of the purposes of high school I see, is that the reason that we do all, everything we do is to teach them how to deal with stress and anxiety. And I don't, I've put four kids through here from, you know, a kid that just made it into the top ten and was that anxious kid, and was bitching about, you know, the other classmate who didn't take the same types of classes and so on and so forth. You know, we had to deal with that and teach her how, for her to deal with that. And then I had the kid that was ranked, you know, fiftieth in the class, and really couldn't care less about their grades, wanted to, you know, didn't see where that was all important, and I had to teach her how to deal with it too, and get her work ethic. So, you know, the idea that we're here to reduce stress for students is not something I'm comfortable with. We need to teach students how to deal with stress, and be able to understand the stress that they're putting on themselves, the stress that the outside world is putting on them, and how to deal with that. That's one of the main purposes of what we do here. As far as pursuing their interests, that's something that they should be looking at, they should be doing themselves. When they get into high school, they should have the confidence to decide that this is the direction I want to go, or at least learn. Sometimes, they, I think that by putting themselves in a position where they might not, you know, think that they want to be a chemistry person, for example, by going through that and learning something about it and getting a better understanding of it, they really find out that they aren't that type of person, or they might, something might click and find out that they are. So I, I'm on the fence, I guess is the best way to say it. I don't, you know, as far as colleges outside is concerned, I think we should present our students as the best foot possible and show them the best for the institution that they want to go to. But as far as a competition internal in the school, I think it's something that, done right, it's a benefit for the kids. That's my thoughts.
I think the, and I respect that, and I think the competition's still there, because even with, yes, we did have twenty-six kids last year that were part of that academic excellence breakfast, but there was a number of kids that were trying to get there, doing what they could, that didn't. So they're competing against themselves more than, more than fellow students. And they were pulling for each other, supporting each other in doing that, and I think that's important too. And I think for any student, the stresses are still going to be there, the stresses of high school are going to be there. For your top students, they still push themselves, they still have those stresses, because they got to take the AP courses. Now, they may not take one that they have no interest in, as whether it's chemistry, or calc, or something like that, but they're still pushing themselves, and the stresses is still there, which we do work with the students on how to address those and how to get through those. So if we can reduce one of those stresses, it's better for our students overall, and that's what the research and the possibility is.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just, just throw some more color on this. First, I want to thank you for bringing this topic, because I do understand that this topic is, does cause stress, does cause consternation with the students, with student body. Couple weeks ago, I heard from one of the parents, I don't know if you can guess who it is, but the parent called me, it was a fun little session, I heard on the phone. I gave feedback, I heard feedback, and I said, why don't you make an appointment and meet with somebody who can give you some more advice? I do appreciate the research you've done with this, I do understand I'm not an expert in education field, although I'm on school, please volunteer, it's okay. The one thing, I know Massachusetts does well educating their students. In the world, I think we're ranked eighth, is that a correct assumption, or is it, it's somewhere in the top twenty-five, not necessarily.
If you go off NAB scores?
But in the world.
Yep.
We're a very well-educated state, we put a lot of money and investment in our students. And so these ideas are something that, you know, they come from either other cultures. You have European cultures, Sweden is, Thailand is being smart, doing different with their education system, Norway is doing some of that stuff. So we're looking at different options, right, you got Acton, up there, you got Andover, they're doing different things with education. Taking away the ranking, but still doing the GPA, and then how does that affect the college journey? What I want to just be concerned about, to bring it to, I think, Paul, you had a comment there about the stress piece, and about dealing with that. There was something that I had read online, because I, it's not like I just Google things and look things up, it's, I like to listen to people who have interesting things to say. And there was a gentleman by the name of Kobe Jones, I'm not sure if you know who he is, but he played for the nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, he played for the L.A. Galaxy. So he's a professional athlete. And he quoted something to me in the video that I watched about people who tried their best, people who did their best. So, and I want to equate that to what I experienced in the past couple of years in my world of work. So at work, we had a layoff, we had to rank people. I was one of the people who had to rank other people based on performance. So this is something that may touch on what you're talking about, Paul, where we're ranking the students, teaching them to deal with that adversity, right? To prepare for stuff, because in the world that I deal with, and it's different from everybody else, there is, there are times where you will be ranked. And you're going to be ranked either for a layoff, ranked for whatever. So I want us to walk that fine line between, you know, removing rank, providing the GPA, but still preparing those students to deal with that adversity, to know that you're still going to be ranked in life, regardless, you're going to walk out of this school system, you'll be ranked. But we're hoping to raise that generation that is a better generation, obviously than the one that's, you know, four or five, or how can you say that? But I don't want to lose the fact that, the comment you made earlier about everybody gets a trophy, right? We want kids to be able to not fail, but when they fail, pick themselves up, right? So if they don't make it into the top ten or top twenty-five, we want them to strive harder. Because this gentleman, Kobe Jones, sat on the bench, even though he made the college team, he sat on the bench, that gave him a little bit more of a kick to work harder. And then he was on the L.A. Galaxy team, and they went to the championship game three times, you know, for that soccer match. The third time they won, which made it sweeter for him because he worked harder. And so, and I think we do a good job here of getting the kids motivated, having them work hard for that, so I don't want us to lose sight of that. So I'm on the fence with the ranking, but I want to really be supportive and open-minded to the idea because other districts are doing it, and I don't want our kids to be penalized with the college, I'm just going through the whole college thing now, it's exciting stuff. So I just want to make sure that with that type of change, it is a positive thing for the students, but there are still avenues just to recognize those students who are doing well, which you did say, there's the principal's award, there's the honors program, there's the three point seven five GPA stuff. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there's that balance, and I think we do a good job at Tinsborough on balance.
I would say we do, and uh if I could just jump in, I mean, I'm I'm uh I'm one hundred percent in favor of of this move. Uh, and I think what we're talking about, uh, you know, reducing stress, you know, our number one priority is is the social emotional well-being of our kids. And how do we put them and position them so that they can challenge themselves and achieve to the maximum, their maximum level on the best of their ability? Uh, and I think what we wanna do here is provide, open, first of all, open as many doors as we can for our kids. And I don't want kids, and I've heard for years, as a principal of a high school, uh, I need to take this class because someone else is taking that class. For those who don't have an understanding, AP classes are weighted more, electives are weighted less. So kids are shying away from those opportunities to go into AP classes. Um, for the opportunity of competing against their neighbor. Um, so I I hear what you're saying in terms of rank, but I I don't think this this. This move. This is different. We're looking at educating all kids in our district to the best of their ability. And I I I I don't, I see it as apples and oranges with a work ranking, to to be honest with you, I really do. Because we're obligated to, to, these kids come in with different skills, different needs, different levels, and our job is to pull them all along and and shine them all in the best possible light. And I think anytime, anytime we put our kids at a disadvantage, we need to be reflective and say, why is that happening? Why is a kid graduating with a three point seven from Tingsboro High School and not being considered top ten percent? What's wrong with our practice? Um, and as as we can be progressive and forward-thinking, I think we need to do that. I think this is 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 the right move for our kids at this time. Do you wanna jump in?
I just think there's a difference when you talk about using rank or or hierarchical order. For judgment purposes, such as work. Um, those respectfully, those rankings probably weren't hung in in the general cafeteria where you guys all eat together. They were used internally to make. Right, I mean, to make decisions, right? Where this is publicly hung. Um, and so you weren't chasing number two to not get laid off. There were people in charge making decisions for a reason here. Um, the motivation behind one, two, and three um is skewed. Um, and does lead to unnecessary stress. Paul, I tend to agree with you about adversity, pulling up your bootstraps, uh failing in order to succeed. I don't disagree with any of that, and I do agree that high school has to prepare kids for the reality of the next level. But this to to me sounds like an unnecessary piece of stress. If 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 I'm a C student and I'm killing myself to get the B, I'm gonna stress at that level. If I'm a three, seven, five, and I wanna keep maintaining, or I have that. Inclination to push harder, I'm gonna stress at that level. I just feel like we're not removing all stress from the reality of high school, clearly. I just think this is one we actually can control, and all of the data so far shows that there's no major gain to to maintain it. So I don't disagree with you. I just think it's an added piece that doesn't need to live in the child's life right now.
Well, I look at it in the the same as the sports metaphor. I mean, we are going to um. Give accolades to the highest, the kid who scores the most points is a kid that just got a thousand points. You know, he worked hard, he he and he stressed over it, he probably, you know, there were days that he went and practiced and did shooting and. Did everything that he needed to do to get to that point. That's the same thing if you look at academics in a similar manner as athletics. That's the same kid who has gone to the, taken the AP courses and done the work and tried to, because they feel that that. You know, hopefully, the reason they do it is that they feel that it's gonna benefit themselves. The idea of just opening up what used to be a academic achievement of. Uh, giving the speech at the uh graduation to everybody, sort of. To me, it sort of gets it a little, brings it down a little bit, because then you're gonna get the kid that is the, you know, he's got the uh. The flash, the the, you know, somebody who's may not take it as seriously as somebody who. That's what, that's what their achievement was in high school, was being the the smart kid. They might not have been able to play soccer or go on the football team or do all some of the other things that we are still going. I don't think we're not gonna. Support the the kids that achieve in those aspects. We've gotta support the kids that achieve in academics. Uh, if to, if you wanna bring down the group that's available to. Give the pres, give the graduation and offer it to the top ten people, for example, and have, you know, somebody do that. I think there's gotta be something besides just saying that. You know, you you got the three point five. Gotta have something saying that these. Individuals were the top. This was the top academic achiever in the the school and give, recognize that it's somehow, some way.
Well, they are recognized through scholarships and awards, um, so that scholarship might.
Yeah, and I think you can look at the parameters of of what you're going to do to 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 select a graduation speaker, but uh. You know, equally important is the kid who overcame adversity to make it to the finish line.
Yep.
You know, and may not be a three nine, maybe a three six or a three four. So I think you, as you think about what this looks like in terms of graduation speaker. Maybe you come up with a a a set of parameters or or a baseline that we're that we're looking for. I I don't know.
Yeah, and and as I said, I'm open to that, the process of some kind of, just wanna be one example that I had.
So I feel like in the school, I'm raising my hand. I I just might have a a further question. So i- is it possible, or are there data points, this is kind of the question I wrote before I got here. Are there data points that are available on students um. That achieve their college of entry choice with the public high school rankings and. And students that aren't ranked at schools and they still achieve their college of entry choice, right? So I I I wanna dig into that data, maybe there's a more data you guys.
I may have to look at that, and I think it's a, it's a tough question saying they're. Are you saying like the the college that they're choosing to, their first choice?
I'm like, I'm friends with a student class to seven colleges and they really, and these are the two I really want.
Right.
But then they.
Right.
They may not, they may not.
I think that data, and it's definitely something that could affect that, but I think that data gets skewed, being the person who's seeing the colleges that the students are applying to.
Well, if they're unrealistic based on.
Right, and I think that that, you know. Right. Definitely happens, so that that data would be skewed in regards to that.
Well, I think another way to get that same information is, we'll go to a school that stopped class rank a number of years ago, and how their students performed since then.
Westwood Academy hasn't been doing it over a decade.
Okay.
And.
So the same percentage of students get into the Ivy League schools as.
I don't I don't have that, but I'm just saying, I, they have, and I have no doubt, kids get in uh great schools, right? Kids get into great schools coming out of Tingsboro High School.
Yeah.
But if you can take one less determination factor away that could negatively affect for, I believe that's something we should do.
I think the comparative analysis you're looking at is, right, so last year, maybe kids graduate, and we had this whole list of where they got into, right? We didn't just say, say, who got in where, but here are the schools they applied to, here the way they were accepted, right? So does Westwood offer that same type of historical data for the past three years? What are the schools, we don't wanna know what kids they are, but what are the schools they actually got accepted to? And then bring that over here and overlay that over Tingsboro and say, oh, wow, they got into the same or similar, or Tingsboro got into better ones. Regardless of the ranking or not, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out, are they still able to get into certain caliber schools?
Absolutely, yeah. I I have no no doubt about that, you know, from the data you look at. One of the things that I I don't have the article in front of me, but one of the uh some of the research we found, only um, I think it was. I don't wanna give it a thinker.
Like, the percentages?
Yeah.
Relatively, I think I have done a couple of that.
Um, at Duke University, only thirty-eight percent of schools report class record.
Of those students that apply, yeah.
Of those students that apply, twenty-six percent to Yale, so.
So, yeah, if you're talking to a committee, you know, we don't know all this.
Yep, so I know, and that's.
It's great, you're bringing this data to us, and that's the data we don't.
So you don't, you clearly don't need, like, twenty-six percent of students applying at Yale, give it those from their schools.
Well, I'm a hundred percent in favor of us presenting our students in the best light possible. So if, you know, if it's, if it's best for us to tell colleges that this student was the number one in the class. And that's gonna make that student get to where they wanna go, that's what I think we should do. But if it's best that we, you know, all the other students, we don't say anything about it, that's fine for me too. It's what we think is best, or what you as the administration thinks is best to how to present our students to. Go to where they wanna go. After the twelve years of being here, giving them the opportunity to get where they wanna be. That's what, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that.
So to Paul's point, and then piggyback on Mike's point, why don't we put together some more information, some more data? And and give the committee some talking points so that they, they're they're better informed out in the community as advocates and uh supporters of um of the schools.
So I I had one more question. So you talked about, if you don't take class rank, students are gonna be more likely to take that elective versus AP class. Whereas in such a small school compared to smaller communities, are we worried about enrollment in AP classes being so low, we can't offer them anymore?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think conversely, to be honest with you, I think that could lead to to some of the reason that we're we're studying our AP data right now, I think. Potentially, kids are taking AP classes that they're not necessarily one hundred percent invested in or interested in, and I think it's impacting their performance and their achievement. Uh, we talked about our stagnant AP scores, something that I know just put a committee together to look at that, and I think part of that is because of. Kids trying to improve their class rank or GPA for class rank purposes. I'm hoping that as a a byproduct of this, we'll see uh better achievement on our AP exams, because kids who are taking AP classes. Are taking it because they want to, not because they're trying to move up in the batting order.
And if you remember, earlier in the year, we've talked about that and with the lack of prerequisites and how we compare ourselves with other schools who who have prerequisites and don't. I think this is one step to maybe make sure um kids are appropriately taking those classes before we have to go in the direction of prerequisites and other layering. Um, for requirements.
The only other piece of data that I would like to to see is in the schools that do not have the rankings. Has there been any decline in the average, GPA average of say the top ten? Cause now they're not competing against each other. So.
So there may be, because those kids aren't taking higher weighted courses.
Well, they might not, right, that, you mean, they're not taking four instead of three, yeah.
No, they might not be taking an AP courses, which was rated as a four point two as opposed to an elective at three point eight. So that, I don't know that, it's just.
Nice, I'd be interested.
So we'll get, we'll get some more data points for sure. Um, you know, it sounds like um that's definitely what we're looking for here, but um. Yeah, but conceptually, I think I think it's a it's a good move. And Jim, I don't know if you specifically spoke to him, but um in terms of your high school council. Their feedback, I mean, you talked about the kids, but the parents.
Yes, and the parents were on board with it, um, from from our school council group. Uh, there were two junior parents that um. Did have concerns of why we're not gonna do it right away. Um, there was a sophomore parent there that said her daughter has worked extremely hard for that. So when she first came home, her daughter was bothered that came, uh, when presented to students. So when she first came home, she was upset about it, and they talked through it. Um, and then even more so after, um, that parent had heard the presentation, she was, she said, I am in support of this, seeing that it could have a negative effect on on college.
Would you, would one option be to do it with the incoming freshman class as opposed to the existing students, or is it just something that is such a a need now?
There's so much fluctuation during that freshman freshman and sophomore year.
Right.
That we can do it now with at least some amount of impact. That's kind of where I spoke to, with the juniors are, I don't wanna say the 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 top students can't change. But it's a lot harder once you get more credits to really adjust your GPA. Um, so freshmen and sophomores, they haven't taken. Enough courses where, um, there's still a lot of fluctuation there, especially the freshmen, um. I, they were, after the first time, I said, it's it's sixty.
Ten number ones, yeah, that's obvious.
No, I think it's been a great discussion. We can say, great topic, and I appreciate you coming on. Thank you, I appreciate, I really do appreciate the work that you put into this, because I know it's. It can be um, it can be daunting to um older school guys, you know, hey, what are you doing? What are you changing? Change? Why are you making a change? Thank you.
I think he was making fun of Italians, but he was making fun of old people. Old people.
All right, um, any other further discussion? So thank you both for that.
Thank you.
Mister uh.
Mister Ogden's gonna stay right there for you.
Ogden's gonna stay right there for us.
So just as you know, um, in in response to uh the horrific event part of Florida, um, there's a national movement, uh National Student Milwaukee Movement. Um, and and that movement is really for students to to have a voice, have a voice in their in their safety and their education, uh and in their community, so. Uh, recently, uh, Mister Ogden and I attended a a regional meeting with approximately twenty superintendents and twenty high school principals. To discuss how different groups were, or different school systems were approaching this, uh, the March fourteenth uh. Uh, Student Voice Movement. I will say that philosophically, Mister Ogden and I are, and and I think Dr. Bradgill and the rest of the admin team. Are one hundred percent in line, we one hundred percent, our students having a voice, we're gonna be supportive, but we want the day to be purposeful. Uh, we don't want the students to walk out for the sake of walking out, so it's an opportunity for them to grow. And I think the kids at the high school have done. An incredible job of coming up, and it's, this is a student-driven initiative, so I thought I I, Mister Ogden could share tonight with you what their plan is. And I'll let you know that there will be communication going out to parents from me on Friday to let them know that we are supporting. Uh, Student Voice in Tingsboro Public Schools. So, Jeff?
Um, so as Mike said, the the walkover is taking place next next Wednesday on March fourteenth, um, scheduled to start at ten AM. Uh, over the past week or so, I've met with student leaders, um, our s. Our class officers, as well as our student council officers, to uh come up with a plan on how they wanted to handle this. Uh, as Mike said, we are supportive of it, and and I think that's important for the students to know. Um, I don't want the. Have any interpretation about doing this and thinking there's gonna be any kind of discipline or pushback from us on it, but as Mike said, the biggest thing is, we want this to be purposeful. Um, I think students, the survivors of of Parkland and other students, coming forward have sent such a strong message and positive example. For our kids included, um, and I think this is our kids' turn to do that. So the student council, like, meeting groups, um, have really stepped up and and taken the lead in doing this. Um, so our plan for that day is, uh. As you say, at nine fifty-five, one of the students is entirely student-developed. Um, it's not gonna have any political bias or. Gun pro or anti-gun message at all. This is strictly pro-school safety. That is the message they're sending. As well as remembrance for um victims of the Florida and other school shootings. Uh, so at nine fifty-five, students are gonna come down and make an announcement, invite students to do this. Uh, she's also, so it's scheduled to be a spiel, but. We are getting a foot of snow, I believe, so contingency plans are in effect for that. Uh, if the weather is terrible that day, or it's still a tough snow out there, we're gonna walk in. To the uh end of the gymnasium, um, for the for there instead, so that's the first.
We're gonna walk in.
Walk in, yeah, so that's the first adjustment to this, uh, so weather may play a factor. But uh for any student that doesn't wanna attend it, um, they're gonna be invited to come to the library during that time that we supervise them here. Um, it's their right to do that, we respect that just as much as we respect the rights of the students that do wanna take part in this. Uh, from there, they'll they'll hopefully be outside. Um, opening remarks, uh, by by Quinn, who is the student council president. Uh, then they're gonna read the seventeen victims' names, different students will do that with a short bio for each. We'll then have another student, um, recognize other shootings that have taken place, and then a moment of silence from there. From there, it's going to be a poem read, and then it's coming back to what our students can do. So I think this is a really important part of it, to show that students can have a voice in the ways that they can help things. So for anyone that'll be eighteen, for the elections in November, that we're gonna have voter registration forms for them. Uh, there's also gonna be a commitment to safety banner that we'll put together that all students will be able to sign right after that event, it'll be uh hung up within the school. And for the remaining time that we're out there, um, they came up with, to take an opportunity to meet seventeen people you not, may not know. I know we're a small high school, I know people know a lot of people, but you really know that person. So what they, what they came up with is to share a smile, share a compliment, and just learn something new about somebody. Um, from there, they'll give closing remarks, and then we'll head back into the building. As it is pretty public that, um, schools across the country are walking out during nine o'clock that time. Uh, obviously, school safety is a major concern of ours, so we do have a plan in place in order to deal with that, to be a very good school. Um, we are, we've talked with them, continuing to work with, uh, the Tingsboro Police as well, um, to compile this, so, uh, they'll be involved as well, um, just. As a presence more than anything else, um.
Do do the students feel the police are a partner, or do they feel that this police should stay away?
I made the point that they're just gonna be here, more than anything else. Um, I I haven't, we haven't worked out the specifics, I I'm assuming he'll just be. One cruiser with with one officer, um, aside from Manny who's at grade a wall that day. So, uh, it says it's a Wednesday, so, um. Just for a piece of mind, we like someone here, um, to be able to do that. So from there, well, the students will head back into the building. Um, I met with staff today that some students are probably, most students are probably wanna talk about this when they head back to class, so. Uh, we gave them some talking points on uh discussions once we get back to class that day. Um, for that period, obviously, academics aren't gonna be interrupted, um, but I think this is important for our students, and it's an important message. Um, that they can send during that time.
Some of the talking points, just if I, Chair, if I could just ask a question.
Absolutely.
Um, will there be any discussion on mental illness, or anything that touches on um that type of?
When they go back to class, or or when they're outside?
Either outside or in the class.
Outside, there's no plan for that, um it may go down that road within the class, um we ask the teachers to use their best judgment a- as we always do. Um and where the class needed and where the discussions may go, um some students may get upset by this obviously during that day. And we instruct them to head up to uh sent to student services or call one of us down so we can help uh with that process.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a high school event only or are the other two schools taking part?
The high school, this plan here is for the high schools, uh high school specific, um in the last talks I had, I believe. Dark planning and middle school is planning something as well.
Sure, uh so developmentally, we don't think it's appropriate for anything to take place at the elementary school, I'll say that. Um middle school, there have been several students have expressed an interest to do something, so I know that Chris, uh Mr. Paul is working with those students right now. To um to develop a plan for that, um he has the template that the high school's gonna use, what we don't want is we don't want the middle school kids. To think they can walk out and join the high school, this is a high school driven event, if they wanna create their own event, um and their own plan. At the middle school, they can do that and we'll support that as well, um but uh you know, and I'm encouraging them. To maybe look at the middle school gym as a place to gather, congregate, uh and and have sign a banner, meet some new people, I think that's. Anytime we can enhance the 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 culture and community of the school, I think that's important. Um so just kudos to the kids who are behind this and at the middle school, it's a it's a small group of four or five students there that are really leading the charge. Um I think it's I think it's great that our kids are are politically aware and being active and really advocating for themselves and advocating for student voice, so uh. We certainly wanna support that.
Is is this also an opportunity to maybe enhance or revisit or look at or explain that Alice training, is that the?
No, I don't think we wanna do that this time, we've had conversations, we're meeting with, this is all about advocacy for kids, and we wanted to be focused on that, um. Sure.
I can talk to staff about that in general, but not with the kids.
Okay, I just wanna.
We've um, you know, Jeff and I have met with um Chief Howl, as well as Sergeant Bork and Sergeant Manning recently and, you know. We do a pretty good job with the Alice drills and we'll continue those drills um moving forward, um so I I don't think this specific day is for that.
Do we know what, do we know what the other high schools in town are doing, you said the uh?
I know Great Aul from Sergeant Manning, Great Aul is doing something, I don't know the specifics of their plan, um he wasn't sure with NDA.
Virtually every school in the area is doing something, and a lot of it, a lot of them are walking out, some of them walking their town center. Uh you know, context matters here, right, we're not gonna walk to the bridge, um so so uh.
Losing by the end of the hour.
But they they all are doing something.
Okay, are are you inviting any local politicians, the press, anything like that?
Nope, we're keeping it.
There's a lot of discussion about that, actually, there was a lot of concern about um, you know, one of the twenty-five third district congressional district candidates showing up and. It it's not about that, this is about the kids, it's a student ki- uh kid driven movement, um and I think, you know, even our our teachers or admin are really gonna be on the peripheral. Um and not leading it or part of it, this is their time to have their voice, and I think we wanna honor that and respect that.
What's the general feeling of safety in the Tingsboro High School, is it people feel like there's no strangers? Walking the doors or?
People feel 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 safe overall, um obviously, it's anything will pop up at any time or if something may have concerned, um we take it very serious.
We have new doors and a new security system too.
We do. We do, it's it's a it's another. Deterrent, it's a perception, I think, I think, and I don't mean to 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 steal your thunder, I think we we we've created a culture in this school. Where kids are comfortable approaching uh an adult with a concern, and I think Kate, you could probably speak authentically to the number of. Uh students that come down and say, hey, I heard this, can you look in this, and 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 our kids generally look out for each other and and then. They are comfortable approaching someone if they have a concern, you know, they'll see something, say something, they do that here. And we're very fortunate that they do it.
Are we reevaluating our policies on active shooters or are we comfortable with where we're at?
No, we're comfortable where we're at. Yep, it it we have the the latest uh practices in place and we and we drill them regularly and.
Paul has volunteered to shut one off the football field.
I don't believe where you're going, people are gonna walk out, they better walk out, I mean, this is bad. Just because it's snowing doesn't make get their butts out on the field, that's what they wanna do.
So I I just wanna say, I think this is pretty impressive, I started reading this before you started talking about it and I was like, wow, this was. Students came up with this, I mean, that's pretty amazing when there's a lot of adults now that are so apathetic to everything and. Just to see that is it's nice to know that's what's coming up for the next generation.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Ogden.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Trainer, Mr. Ogden, appreciate it.
Why can't Sarah, you're stuck with us? So we're going back to our regular scheduled program?
Finish off nine C's.
Nine C, uh in your uh in your drive is the uh proposed upcoming meeting schedule. Um just a couple points, we're scheduled to meet April seventeenth on April vacation, generally don't get on April vacation. And our May fifteenth meeting uh is the night of annual town meeting, so I put a proposed schedule out there, um. The only thing I did do was bring us from two June meetings to one, typically that's a chaotic time of year with events and celebrations. Um and we don't allow anyone to schedule any events when there's a school committee meeting, so they could probably be appreciative of another night's schedule. So uh if we could do one meeting in um June as the re-up meeting, that would be beneficial. Uh the other thing that we discussed was all meetings moving forward will be in here, we will tape and send them over to Town Hall. And again, as we do this from the summer, the 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 fall will be, next fall will be broadcasted live from here. Um so this will be our home base, and we will do all subcommittee meetings here as well because we have Jeff's office as well as the library, so it's just, it seems to be a logical move.
Are you gonna continue to have it or rearrange in the furniture every meeting?
They go, how do you wanna set it up today, this is um.
He stopped inviting some of us to help.
They actually, and I will be honest with you, I uh, they had it all set up at six o'clock, I changed it anyways. Thanks for that. So we do need action to 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 uh, we're gonna take action if we're gonna modify the calendar?
Alright. Did everyone have a chance to?
Uh no, I was just gonna ask, it's sort of related, but not really, um for the special town meeting that's coming up on. March twenty-seven.
Correct.
Do you know if there's gonna be kids available to do babysitting?
We can make that happen.
Okay.
Will you send me an email or a text, please?
Yeah.
I'll follow up, nah, definitely. Jeff just left. Jeff will make that happen.
My kids will have all kinds of Pop-Tarts.
Perfect. So we'll do that, so we'll do that, and and I think that's been our practice going forward, so an annual town meeting as well, on May fifteenth, we'll have NHS kids or. Some high high school group volunteer to be available.
Make a motion to accept the new uh proposed revisions of the meeting schedule?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Now can I go back to our regular schedule? Number three, correspondence.
Mr. Chair, just in your uh in your, it keeps saying Dropbox, in your drive is the uh updated newsletter from Valley Collaborative. Uh Dr. Scott does a great job uh at Valley Collaborative, I think it's uh worth your uh time, your few minutes, just uh just to become more familiar with that organization. FYI, that's all that is.
Visitors, comments and questions? Seeing none, share the success.
So I get to fill in for Cory tonight, I'm sure I will not do him justice, but he did do all the work. Great, thank you, so uh.
I'll try to keep it short.
I will, ready update from the district level, uh hopefully you've already seen our second edition of Crossing the Bridge is now available, uh fantastic work. It it's amazing how it's already better and it's only two editions of that, so kudos to all those guys. At Tingsboro Elementary School, T E S celebrated Read Across America Day where students were read to by guests including uh Tingsboro Police Officers. Ms. Carlson and Ms. Schoolie's team showed their service portion of the stripes core values by hosting a Band-Aid Drive. And Mrs. Slattery's art class is combining art with STEM to create STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art and math experience for her students. At the middle school, Animal Control Officer Dave Robson visited Mrs. Craig's Bridges class to teach students about Tingsboro Wildlife. Mr. Varnum has been busy integrating Flipgrid into T M S curriculum, Flipgrid is an app that allows. A video for a formative assessment to be used by the teacher. And at the high school, boys and girls basketball teams continue to win and move on, we have not received an update yet, have we?
Boys tipped off fifteen months ago.
So the boys are playing now, girls are scheduled to play tomorrow, we anticipate that might get bumped to Thursday.
We do.
Congrats to Junior Christian Beck, who is now the first junior in school history to score a thousand career points. And Tingsboro High School Theater's production of The Diviners qualified them to propel to the second round of the annual Massachusetts Theater Competition, so congratulations to our. Thespians, and congrats to the February Students of the Month Brett Callahan, Kalen Carpenter, Lauren Foley and Chris Fornier, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Brack. Subcommittee updates, policy subcommittee?
So I'm going to a first read on section one, policy number one point seven, district objectives. Um and I think the only change to that was that it's going to be looked at annually, is that right?
Correct.
Um so we need an action, requested a motion to approve policy number seven, one point seven is first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any good, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Post, okay, seven zero zero?
And do um a second read, and of course, these all. Um section one, number, policy number one point six, vision and theory of action and number. One point one nine, religious politics, so when action is requested, a motion to approve policy number one point six. Number one point one nine, uh second read.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor? Post, uh carry seven zero zero, thank you, technology subcommittee?
Um we met uh today, uh right before this meeting, uh. We discussed the bring your own device policy in uh. Space him on his name, technology director. Sorry, Derek.
Gives me a hard time for forgetting names.
I'm old.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, but I'm old. So Derek is gonna uh come and present to the technology subcommittee a more formal presentation so that we can hash out some of the different things with the. Involved in bring your own device and we would then then have Derek present that to the full committee. Once we uh get a little better handle on it. Thank you.
We can remember his name.
That guy.
Um personnel.
Mr. Chair, we have uh two resignations, Katie Barry after seven years is uh resigning as Tingsboro High School Social Studies teacher. To concentrate on three kids under the age of three, uh and Jorge Garcia Custodian in Tingsboro Public Schools is also resigning. We'd like to welcome the notification of hires, Chad Garland is gonna be second shift custodian for us, uh and that's all information on.
Unfinished business.
So Dr. Brack will do an overview of the SOI process and update, and that's also in your drive right now. Uh just a couple key dates, the thought would be that if we uh take the next two weeks to review that, make comments and reach out to Dr. Brack. That would be helpful so that we could vote on our draft SOI on March twentieth, so that we could then get in front of the Board of Selectment. To approve this on hopefully March twenty-sixth, we have an April thirteenth submittal date, so um. The timeline seems to work uh right now based on meetings.
So we worked with our colleagues at the MSBA last week to uh do what they call as a repopulation, so they took last year's SOI, they rolled it over, changed dates. Format stays the same, um and so now we've been going in and just updating it with any changes or updates from last year to this year. And I'll just draw your attention very quickly to some of them so that you understand what's changed, um there are questions around teacher reductions and layoffs. Um we can programming changes and restructuring, so if you look in there, you will notice that those changes. Um that we have been discussing this year for next year are reflective of that, I also checked to make sure that it won't impact our status. Uh negatively, and I was informed that that will not be the case, particularly because we're looking at an increase um percentage in our budget and because it's most. Most if not all the changes are tied to a program implementation, program change, so she seemed to think that we would be uh viewed favorably. Um couple other places were very, very minor changes, some language around uh chorus programming and the theater access. Um which we just kind of cleaned that language up from the last time around, changed the class size of the middle school to reflect our current class size. And our STEM um program at the middle school. Um we updated that because he is currently floating between classrooms and he's implementing, um I wanna use the term like old school power tools. Um in a way that's being used as new tech and the rooms and the electrical and some of this stuff might not be so conducive. Uh for some of what's um what that program entails, so that's about it as far as major changes, that's um I bet you can take a quick review it and then we'll come back.
And I think we talked about the uh the MSBA document that I created about the trend of the last four years, uh the updated document will show that seventy. Core projects have been approved in sixty-seven different school districts, so nine middle schools over the last four years. Just a point of reference for you.
Quick question, I was just scanning through it, and there's a section that says, please provide the originally planned student to teacher ratio at the school facility. That's subject of this SOI, is that twenty-three students in nineteen sixty-five?
I did not change that number, my assumption is when that was popular originally, it was based on the original number.
Yes.
So is there square footage of classroom that's sort of a? I mean, does, one of the issues at the middle school is that the the classrooms aren't adequate for. Today's type of learning, is that correct?
Right, that is correct, yes.
So I guess if we're comparing twenty-three students, you know, we, it says above it. It, the student to class ratio is twenty-one per teacher and then there's. The SOI is twenty-three students per teacher, so it just doesn't.
So later in the narrative, we discuss the reality of today's classroom, right, later in the narrative, similar last year, it has a a verbiage that explains. Uh the the changes in technology, the changes in furniture, the change changes in cooperative uh instruction, um small group work, project based learning. So most of, most of what we are, we are saying as as well as our peers in other school districts who have got core projects approved is that the the waste. It's it's less about how many kids are populated in the room, it's more about what the classroom looks like today.
Being a dumb engineer, I just only read the highlights. Just put, I would recommend just in that section alone and I'll read more of it.
Which section is that?
Uh I think it's just a Dropbox that allows me to just type in a number.
I I put twenty-three students per teacher in nineteen sixty-five.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make that note.
I guess one of the things that you've said is that uh the. The schools that get the funding, it's based on uh. You know, need of. The amount of kids that are in the district overcrowding.
One of the first things, yes.
So if we can sort of tailor this to make.
Overcrowding's basic.
Make the issue, the issues of overcrowding that we have, I'm not saying.
Sure.
To do anything that it's not true, but these are the issues of overcrowding and making sure that they understand. What the overcrow, why we're looking for.
Absolutely.
It's one of the objectives.
Absolutely, so we'll go back and make the correct, please, anything you see, just just let us know, and we're happy to modify.
It's a good suggestion. Any other questions?
So we'll we'll look for action on that of March twentieth.
Uh if you guys have anything, um you know, send them over to Dr. Flanagan or Dr. Brack. Eight B. Program review.
Mrs. Loenzic, you're finally up.
I wanted to move you up from Mike's. Dr. Flanagan.
So so uh you've heard us speak uh at length about the coordinated program review. Uh I asked Sarah to come tonight and kind of talk about the highlights of the final report, which we just received, the recommendations of the report and, you know, the steps that we're gonna take. Um I think it's it's important for us to to recognize the incredible amount of time that Sarah and her team, not individually, that Sarah and her team. Put into the uh the self-study for this and all the work that they've done to put. And all the work that they've done to put, position Ting, the Tingsboro Public Schools to get such a favorable report from Desi. We're very pleased with the results and, uh, I just wanna say thank you publicly to Sarah and her team for the outstanding effort you put into this. So at that, with that, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, and thank you for providing me with the time to share information and feedback based on the district's coordinated program review. As you're aware, this fall, members of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, along with, um, on the onsite team for public school monitoring. Reviewed the district's implementation of required criteria in the program areas of special education, civil rights, and English learner education. So there's been a number of months that have happened from the time in which the, uh, self-assessment took place to, which was last spring. To the review by the department, to the onsite review team coming to the district in late November. To a summary report that was provided about a month and a half ago, to the final report that was issued on February twenty-first. So the final report was issued based on the onsite team's review, like I said, of that self-assessment, record reviews. As well as interviews conducted of the district's teachers, related service providers, some parents. Specifically, our CPAC Chair, Amy J. Mason, as well as our administration, um, and staff across the district's end. As we had hoped and truly anticipated on our end, the review, uh, really validated the tremendous efforts. And hard work that's happening within the district. And that was something that had, you know, really been discussed with me personally at the, the end of the, uh, the onsite visit. Based on the direct feedback of Matthew Nixon, who was the chair overseeing for public school monitoring. She, he spoke in very, very high praise of our district as a whole. Um, and just, you know, what they were able to obtain in terms of information in the course of the week in which they were here. As well as the, you know, the amount of months it took them to compile all the information that was sent to them as part of the self-assessment. Um, so I really do wanna make sure that that's, you know, understood by, by our community and by our district. That, you know, this was, uh, this was a light in which, you know, others that came in and really took an objective view of our district and what we do here. And, uh, it was glowing in terms of some of those results, so hopefully I've captured that. Um, and, you know, again, the final report will speak more specifically and you'll have opportunity to see that on our webpage tomorrow. Um, in terms of just a breakdown to give you just some of the highlights like Dr. Flanagan had asked. Um, in terms of civil rights, there are twenty-five, eight, there's twenty-eight criterion in which we need to have implemented across the board. As we anticipated, there was three areas in which we met with partial implementation, as we anticipated. We were already in the process throughout the course of this year, at looking at what corrective action we would take into effect. Knowing that that was potentially, those would be potential findings from the onsite visit. So we weren't shocked by any of this information. We simply know what we need to do now within the next phase, which is called corrective action. In order to remedy those specific areas. Um, under special education, there was fifty-nine criteria, along with the record review that I spoke in regard to. There were no findings, so that's something to, you know, be particularly proud of in that program, um, and across the board for special education. So there is no corrective action required, and again, there was no findings for special education. Again, as.
I'm not gonna let you gloss over that. I'm gonna reiterate that.
Please.
Zero findings and fifty-nine key action steps that they were looking to evaluate us on. That's unheard of. That's incredible, so.
And just to maybe speak in behalf of Tingsboro, so this was within, you know, a six-year period. Our last CPR also held a fully implemented findings for special education. So this isn't a fluke, um, so I just wanna recognize the hard work of those. Prior to myself, my team, and our fantastic team of teachers and related service providers working with our students within this district. Um, specific to ELL, there was a few findings that again met with partial implementation that we were fully anticipating. And Dr. Branko has worked very closely with Brittany Farrick specific to that. Um, and I can, I don't wanna speak for you certainly, but those are areas that, you know, will be more specifically defined within the final report. That will be seen online if you'd like to, you know, take an eye, uh, take an opportunity to capture what specifically we'll be looking forward to. In regard to the next phase, which is, like I said, that corrective action will have a full year in which to then implement the, uh, those partial implementations. And we'll be meeting, or we'll be working closely with public school monitoring in regard to where we stand as a progress, what they recommend. And what we need to do as far as a timeline and next steps leading right up until full implementation. Um, before closing, I certainly want to, uh, thank and publicly recognize the tremendous efforts. Of our teachers in this district as well as our related service providers. Our building principals, uh, really stepped up in regard to the logistics of our onsite visit as well as interviews. And really helped to alleviate concerns based on, uh, teacher interviews, which can be pretty daunting. When you have, uh, you know, those coming from outside of your district and judging really where you stand as a, you know, as. Uh, perhaps not a teacher at that point, but how, you know, how and why we're delivering the way we do, the instruction we do. And, you know, across the board, how, uh, you know, we're meeting the needs of students. So just wanna thank them for those efforts. Um, I'd like to also specifically recognize, um, all of the hard work of our special education facilitators. Josh Evans, Brian Riley, our Director of School Counseling, who was tremendous effort in regard to the civil rights component of this report. And I know Mark, uh, I know that Mark wants to really more publicly speak to Brittany Farrick in regard to a thank you song. Let me do that.
Yeah, so i- in addition to her, her teaching load, Brittany has really kind of stepped up in the department, helping us out with all of our ELE. Um, students from a compliance standpoint to a programming standpoint, um, as a low incident district with small numbers in ELE. Um, you know, we're not in a position to add, uh, you know, three, four, five staff members in a, in a, in a department. Because of the small amount of students we have, um, that doesn't mean that the work is necessarily less when it comes to, um, maintaining high-end programming. Meeting the needs of a very diverse population, albeit less kids in larger districts. Um, and Brittany has been a main point of contact for us, uh, with the, with the DESE. Um, and as someone who's coming in, um, new to this type of programming, uh, it's been very helpful to have somebody there, um, working with us and for us. On behalf of these kids.
And that's, you know, similar in my response to the administrative team that I just spoke to in regard to their efforts. There was a lot of preparation that was ongoing throughout this process and it was something that certainly one person cannot do alone. So, um, again, thank you to them for all that they did to make this possible.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, great job by everybody. Thank you for coming on.
Thank you. You get to go home now.
Yes, you get to go home now. Number ten, finance. That's where I am.
Nine C.
One more.
We did nine C. Oh, we got eight C.
Eight C's.
You can't take this stuff out of order.
I'll defer to the supervisor.
Can't wait for that. So I just wanted to give you an update on the Valley lease, uh, where we are with that. I informed, uh, the committee a few weeks ago that I would be, uh, or the committee asked me to, uh, have begin negotiations or discussions. With Valley Collaborative, see what their interests would be moving forward. Um, so I wanted to provide you some numbers just so you have them and you can speak, uh, um, publicly about them. Right now, the current lease ends on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Valley Collaborative pays us two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Or nine dollars thirty-seven cents per square foot over the twenty-seven thousand square foot facility. Of that money. Now you decreased it, Mark.
Sorry, man, yeah, I'm sorry. The money's going down.
So, uh, of that money, of that money, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars on top of that, that's, that's the flat lease money. Then they pay an additional seventeen thousand dollars for a halftime custodian as well as twelve hundred dollars towards school resource office for a grand total of two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. The two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars is then divided out, but approximately a hundred fifty thousand of that is for the operation of the building. And approximately a hundred, or a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of that goes into our Lakeview lease revolving account. That's the account that we've used, that we've talked about as balance of just over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that's the account that we use for capital repairs throughout the district. So as we talk about moving forward, uh, I met with, uh, the Executive Board of Valley Collaborative on February twenty-eighth. And we had a conceptual discussion about extending this lease for ten years and what that would look like. Uh, the next day on March first, that conversation was then brought to the full board. And I obviously recused myself from the conversation. Um, and the full board fully supported continued deliberation between the Tingsboro Public Schools and Valley Collaborative. To look at a cost share for capital improvements for the Lakeview School. And the, the way they're talking about it now is instead of taking, uh, an additional eighty thousand dollars and putting it to the lease. Saying, keep the lease consistent for ten years. And they will pledge eight hundred thousand dollars of capital money to be paid to the Tingsboro Public Schools. Within the first four years so that we can front-load the improvements on that school. So as you drive down or you continue down in the document, I just wanted to give you the numbers so you can see. So Valley Collaborative for the next ten years will invest, well, not invest, will spend a portion to, over two million dollars. To Tingsboro Public Schools. So if you look at our TPS lease revolving account, currently, we will, so after ten years, we'll have eight hundred thousand dollars for Valley Collaborative. Plus our current balance of three fifty, plus the money we accrue over a ten-year lease. So we'll have two point four million dollars in that account. To be expended in the following manner, eight hundred thousand dollars for Tingsboro Public School capital projects. And one point six million dollars for improvements on the Lakeview, uh, school. The way we talk about, to me, this is a win-win for this community. This is a win-win for Valley Collaborative. Um, they're getting a, a facility that they really enjoy being in. They're getting, they're, they're getting, uh, stability. In, uh, in their, in their lease across ten years and they're, um, and they're, uh, helping us to be a good partner. And they, they, they appreciate the support they get in this community from our fire, from our police, from our D P W. Uh, they, we really are part of the community at this point, uh, as a solid lease member. And, uh, I think this is an opportunity for us to capitalize on that and, uh, and make some improvements to that school and benefit the, the Tingsboro Public Schools. So, uh, we're in a good situation right now. If you were to, and I, the reason I put the square foot number earlier. If you were to say, what does that number look like over ten years? The additionally hundred thousand dollars, that would move their number from nine thirty-seven a square foot to twelve dollars and thirty cents a square foot. When they rented the Valley Collaborative leased property from Drake it, it was about twelve fifty or twelve sixty a square foot. So that's right in line with an educational lease, which is very different from a commercial lease. Commercial lease is much higher, um, uh, per square foot. Um, so, so it's, it's, it's right in there. It's right in market value. So I feel like it's, it's, it's a good price for us and it's, it's a benefit for our Lakeview School. So, um, those are the preliminary discussions that are happening right now. Obviously, um, anything that is drafted by Valley Collaborative will be brought to this committee, vetted through Mike Long. And then we'll bring it to, um, to the town for further action. But, uh, I just wanna know, you know, it was a very positive meeting, very positive, uh, discussion. There's a lot of support for it. And, uh, again, I think it's a win-win, so I just wanted to share that with you tonight.
Could you touch briefly on what capital improvements you foresee that one point six million dollars?
Sure, yes. So the first thing is windows. The first thing over there, that's, uh, you know, George Triakis' big thing is we need to improve the windows, uh, at that school before we even address H V A C. The next thing will be H V A C, heating and cooling in that, in that, in that school. Um, you know, as we look at NSBA, accelerated repair, you know, the reason, part of the reason we're excluded from that and not being able to go that route is because. They would give us a new boiler, potentially in SBA, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna give us new coils, new piping, new motors to deliver the heating system. So the new boiler doesn't do us any good if we can't get the heat on effective, effectively and efficiently. So, um, first project windows, second project, uh, H V A C. And quite honestly, we need to, we're gonna work with Valley and prioritize what the third project would be. They have, um, as, as an older facility, they obviously have, uh, extensive, uh, electrical needs. In terms of upgrading panels and adding outlets throughout the school, um, so that's one of their concerns. Um, so we're gonna look at what else we'll spend it on, but I think that'll be a collaborative effort between the, the school and Valley. To say, you know, you know, you're investing two million dollars in Donna Tingsboro, should give them some say at the table. They'd like to see the school as well. Uh, we also talk about potentially beautifying the exterior a little bit and cleaning up the landscaping there, maybe some, uh, the pavement as well. So, uh, the two big ones are electrical.
The eight hundred thousand would be paid out over the course of the first four years.
Yes, so the language they're, they're, they're looking at right now is minimally two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Plus, we have, we would have a hundred and forty-nine thousand.
We currently have three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
In there.
In there, so year one will have around a hundred twenty-five, so we'll have, you know, almost four or five hundred thousand dollars to match them. Whatever they put in year one to address windows.
Do we have any kind of timeframe on when these projects would start?
So George is going there Friday. Friday to meet with, uh, to meet with, uh, Brandon's gonna talk about what we need to do to get an RFP out there. So that we're going forward in RFP, uh, knowing that the committee fully supported this, the board fully supported this. Just so we can, you know, that's gonna take time to get that project together and we'll work out the language in the meantime.
And the reason for my question is.
Yep.
We will have one point two million in four years. We don't have to wait the full ten years to accumulate the two million dollars to do these improvements. When this lease is done, we will have a fully refurbished building. Windows, H V A C, electrical, roof. Hopefully.
Not roof, but, not roof, but everything.
The roof isn't old to begin with, is it?
It was already done.
It was already done, right, so when this ten years is up, A, we have a building that's being occupied. It's paying to renovate itself. We actually get money to the rest of the district back. There's no downside. There's absolutely no downside to this ten-year lease that I can think of unless somebody has some.
I will, you, you asked.
Paul has a question.
So we're gonna be putting in eight hundred thousand dollars also.
Of the money they give to us, yes.
So in four years, uh, in four years, we get, uh, a million dollars basically from the lease. Correct?
Yep.
So then we would only, in the four years, we would only have. Actually, we're, the timing is an issue. Because we have to pay, a hundred twenty-five thousand is going to, um. Upkeep and maintenance and our responsibility as the landlord.
One fifty is.
So. If I could, I gotta do this on paper.
So we, so, so you're right. We need to wait for the one twenty-five to come in over the ten years.
So over the first four years, we would have five hundred thousand dollars. So one twenty, one twenty-five, uh, for the first four years, um, five hundred thousand dollars. We currently have a little over three hundred thousand in, in that lease money that we've already set back from the prior years. So we're in that four-year period, we're there at about the eight, depending upon any other capital items for the other buildings that might come up.
Well, that's my point is that if we're committing to this, we don't have any money for other capital projects. In those first four years.
So, so right now, in the first four years, we're gonna have one point two million dollars. That doesn't mean we can do everything right at once, because we already have four hundred thousand dollars in the bank and they're gonna give us eight hundred thousand dollars. That's one point two to do, again, phasing these projects in. So we could do a six hundred thousand dollar window project and say, give us two more years before we tackle project two. So we're not gonna do one point six million dollars with reservations at once. We need to phase it in systemically. Cause be, for that reason.
That's what I wanted to be clear.
Yes.
So the, they're gonna give us the money in four, the eight hundred thousand in four years.
Correct.
We're not necessarily spending it.
Not in the first four years.
Well, we don't have to match it.
We do have to match it. We do have to match it over the ten years.
Over the ten years, right. So we could actually spend their eight hundred thousand at one capital project.
Correct.
Windows.
Correct.
Within the first three years. And then ours would be spent on future capital projects as we go along.
Right.
So we don't have to match the eight hundred thousand in the first four years.
And we will look at what phase one, phase two, phase three looks like. So that we are not in a position where we're handcuffed without any funding to do anything if an elevator goes, if we need to do a bathroom. So we're gonna, we'll strategically lay that out.
Yes. This isn't gonna keep us from being able to apply for any, any of their quick prepare to the MSBA as well. I know initially the first one we were talking about, um. The number of projects that need to be done in that building would prevent us from being able to go on the first one. If we go and we apply through their quick application process for one towards the end, still get reimbursed.
Potentially at that point, if we upgrade everything else, depends on what the council's, exactly. Potentially at that point, if we upgrade everything else, depends on what the council's, exactly. This was quick and dirty numbers, once we get the contract and we get a, we get a bid spec, we'll then look at what it looks like phasing in timeline-wise, so then we're protected here as well. But I just wanted to provide that as a update for everyone.
Thank you, any other comments or questions in that cell? Any more negativity? Alright, we're going to finance where everything is good.
Lots of spending, now that the superintendent's down, I'll, I'll, I'll take over finance. Uh signing of bills, it was eleven warrants presented to the committee tonight. Um in your drive are a list of the warrant numbers, accounts and amounts, um as well as bills. In your drive is also the last two payrolls since we last reported them to you, uh the payrolls of February nineteenth and March fifth. And those warrant numbers and amounts are in your drive as well.
Alright, very good.
I'll set with others.
School committee discussion?
Set down with Amy.
I'm sorry, Julie. I can't see you, so.
Um, just want to say, um, good luck to the teams that are playing tonight and the next soon, the two basketball teams and hope they do well.
I agree, students uh also have their trimester finals this week, so wish them well in those endeavors, hope they do well and not get stressed out.
Good evening.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm good, thanks.
It's a great discussion today with the uh, you know, talking about the class ranks and these, some of the things, there are. Lot of different issues in the schools that need to be addressed and glad they're being brought forward to us. Hopefully we can uh make some money off the lease and do some more improvements, thank you.
So uh just congratulations to everyone who was involved in our, our quarter program review, it was a lot of work and thank you for your efforts. Um really, really proud of uh, of our students, um the way they've come together uh and. Advocated for themselves and, and developed the plan and advocated with the administration and, and really are, are taking this. Very seriously on this March fourteenth lockout, um just couldn't be more proud of, of their initiative and their drive, so uh wish them all the best with that.
I'm all set, thank you, stay ever coming and staying. Uh we do have a need for an executive session this evening, uh to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health. Rather than professional competence uh of an, of an individual, or to discuss discipline or dismissal of. Or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual. Uh we will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular session meeting, this action will require a full call.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
I will second.
Full call.
I'm in favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor.
In favor, uh Gary seven zero zero, thank you and have a good night.